If you'll stand with me and render the pledge of allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation.
Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me, please, please. Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on all that are present here tonight and the families we represent. We ask that you put your hand upon us and guide us as we make the decisions that affect the citizens of our fair city. In Jesus' name, amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Fink.
Here.
We're all present and accounted for. We'll call the meeting to order. The character trait of the month is alertness, being aware of what is taking place around me so I can have the right response. Fellow counselors, you have received copies of the minutes from the City Council meeting of June 19th, 2012. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Counselor Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. Is there any amendments, deletions, adjustments, or discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand, please. In the opposition, by like sign, seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time, we'll entertain comments or questions from persons present regarding any item on tonight's agenda. It must be specific to items on tonight's agenda at this time. Is anyone that would like to comment on any item on the agenda tonight? Mr. Brand. Good evening, sir.
Evening. Lonnie Brand, 258 Terry Lane. Resolution number two talks about the hiring of a building inspector.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean we don't currently have one?
Our building inspector recently passed away, so we're replacing. Well, we're never able to replace Mr. Green, but we're filling that position.
Okay, so it's just a replacement vote you're doing. It was already budgeted to have one, just that you're doing a replacement vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Resolution number three, the hiring of three police officers. Are those replacement police officers, or are they additional police officers?
Those are to fill vacancies.
Fill vacancies, okay. Resolution number four, to enter into a lease agreement. Is this a, this agreement that costs the city anything?
No, sir. It will not cost the city a dime.
Okay. The resolution number five, the change of control from Nology to Wide Open West. I haven't heard anything about Nology not being here no longer, so what's this about?
Nology, the city has a franchise with Nology, and Wide Open West recently acquired Nology. So, for legal purposes, all that has to be changed over, and any documents, franchise documents, has to read "Wide Open West," and that's what we're doing.
So they've just become the parent company of Nology?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Resolution number six, to accept maintenance of Legion's office park at Home Place. Who currently does the maintenance at Office Arms Home Place?
Well, currently, the developer is responsible for it. When they reach a certain degree of completeness, if you will, and I'm going to refer to Mr. Duke for a specific answer, then they appeal to the city to take over street maintenance, streets, curves, gutters. But they have to complete it and put it in proper order first before we take over the maintenance on it.
Okay.
But I can get Mr. Duke up here for specifics if you'd like.
Well, that's specific enough. I just wasn't sure why they were doing it. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Would anyone else like to address the council on any agenda item? All right, sir. Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, sir. I have a short one for you.
Should be a very short one, but I would, would like, a little indulgence, to be recognized. Mr. Bridges, please, with the State Archives, and I didn't know if you might have anything to say?
I didn't know whether it should be now or when you all say.
Probably be best to come before us right now, Dr. Bridges.
Okay.
Please, come forward. We're going to grant the mayor a point of privilege here.
You want me, just to give you a little background about our request?
Yes, sir, please.
Some of you may be familiar with the Department of Archives and History. We're right across the street from the Capitol, and in 2005, we added a big wing to the building. It was a $20 million addition, and that wing included about 11,000 square feet in which we are building a new museum exhibit system that will tell the history of the state of Alabama from 1700 through the start of the 21st century. And it's divided into sections. The first section is from 1700 to statehood. The next section is from 1819 statehood to the start of the Civil War. And that section is called Cotton State, and it's about the boom time in Alabama that came from cotton. And we go on around. Each other period is featured there. But years ago, when we started the design on this, we had had conversations with the people at Continental Eagle and with the mayor, Mayor Byard then, about the possibility of borrowing the gin that you have in the lobby to display there. It would be, the design plan has it as the centerpiece of this gallery on the Cotton State. And we have another gin that is more beat up. It's not as, it's not as nice, and it doesn't have the direct connection with Daniel Pratt that your gin has. And it, we are, we would like to ask the possibility of borrowing that gin for display as the centerpiece in that Cotton State section of our museum. It's, as you know, it's a beautiful gin. It reflects the technology that made the Alabama Cotton State prosperity work, and it shows also the first really significant industrialization in Alabama. So, if you've got any questions about that, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Counselor Striplin, did you have a question or any comment to add to the doctor's comments? Or do you want to wait?
Counselor Fink, it is.
Counselor Fink?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming down to do this as well, and I can't think of a more fitting place for that gin to reside than over at the State Archives. I've been there a number of times, and it's just a fascinating archive building to go through. And I, I can't think, as I said, I can't think of a more fitting place for that, and also the exposure that it will give Prattville as well. It's a, it's a true win-win.
Thank you very much, Counselor Fink. We actually have the George Cook portrait of Daniel Pratt, the original, from which that's based, and that would be hanging with the gin. And so, I mean, this will, you know, will be, I think, an important way of showing Prattville's role and its importance in Alabama history. We're also, in later, in a later section, we also have some other material, I think, relating to World War II production that was done here when these mills were adapted to, for support of America's War after World War II. We'll also have some other material that will illustrate Prattville's contribution there.
Any other questions? Counselor Striplin?
Dr. Bridges, again, thank you for, for coming this evening and for the.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chief.
For this opportunity that you're affording the city of Prattville, that I have spoken with representatives of the Pratttogan Museum, the Heritage Association, and the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority. All are very much in favor of doing this and making this loan. A 10-year period is a reasonable period of time from, from our perspective. We realize you've made a significant investment in the facility, and the only thing we would like is that at an appropriate point in the future, if we ever had a Daniel Pratt Cotton Gin Museum here in Prattville, that the possibility of getting it back. And, but, we, we think that it would be better safe-kept in your location for the next 10 years. We think you would take better care of it than, than it would be sitting in our lobby, and, and we look forward to seeing it there and understand you're going to give Prattville recognition for it, so.
Yes, sir. That, that's right. Well, thank you very, very much. I think it really will be a wonderful way of showing the importance of Prattville in Alabama history. Thank you.
Any other questions, the doctor? Let me add my thanks to you, sir, and your organization for helping us showcase our, showcase our city and our founder.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, Doc, good doctor. Thank you for coming down tonight, and I totally concur. I think that it would be a very fitting place for it, and after they get it situated, I would probably be one of, hopefully, one of the first visitors through there, because I think I would like to see the, the original portrait of Daniel Pratt, as they have it sitting over there. I did promise to keep this short. Couple of requests that I do have is that, Resolution number two, it's for a building inspector, and I'll, I have to say, I really wish I was not standing up here and asking for this position to be filled. The gentleman who, who was in this position was a great person, great man. He was, maybe he was short in stature, but he was very big in heart, and he is no longer with us. He, he has some very big shoes to fill. But with that, I met this gentleman a few years ago under the CERT program, Community Emergency Response Team, and he was a great leader, and he'll truly be missed. He was part of the city family. To tell you, I really don't know how long he's, he'd been with the city, but he made his presence known. So whoever's going to be hired for this position, if the council sees fit to move forward on this resolution, they, they do have some big shoes to fill. But if you can move forward on Resolution number two and number three also, the hiring of three more police officers, these are to, these three positions are to fill, some vacant positions, to help us keep our personnel numbers at the right number in that department. The, the resolution also about the Pratt gin, I do agree with that, and hopefully you guys will move forward on that tonight. The only other comments I guess I have is that the, right now, tonight, the Target Corporation is having the Take Back Tonight program up in their parking lot. We have some of our first responders up there, so does Millbrook, the state, and so if anybody that has the time, if they could go by, go by tonight, I think it's from five to, is it eight? Eight, five to eight? So if anybody does have a chance to go by there, they did have some free hot dogs, and I think I was one of the first persons to, to take one of those. So I don't know when, if you happen to make it by, if there's going to be any more left. But the, the only other upcoming function we have will be August 18th at Pratt Park, back-to-school activities there. Hopefully, there might be something else to work in there in the meantime. I do not have any kind of dates. They've not been completely validated. The Coca-Cola Challenge, $100,000 grant for, for Pratt Park, but right now, I'm feeling mighty good with 7 million vote lead on that. We'll just have to wait for the final confirmation on that. But besides that, that's all I have, and I hope that was short enough.
Any questions of the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll move into the reports from the council members on special committees. Counselor Striplin, do you have a report?
No, sir.
Counselor Wood?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Fink?
No, sir.
There's no report from the Chair this evening, so we'll move into the agenda. First item is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 201 Alice Lane, 1657 East Main Street, 279 Gardner Road, 104 Irma Lane, 102 Kelsey Place, 104 Kelsey Place, 4906 Street, the vacant lot at the corner of Highway 14 East and Interstate Commercial Park Loop, 203 Walker Street, 1111 Wright Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the city of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by like sign. Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one building inspector for the Prattville Fire Department at an annual cost not to exceed $53,591. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas there is a need in the Prattville Fire Department to fill a vacancy for one full-time building inspector, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, whereas the cost of such building official will not exceed an annual cost of $53,595 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $53,591 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one full-time building inspector, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2012 budget line items, fire departments, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, life insurance, health insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Miller?
Yeah, I noticed those two figures, I guess I could have substituted, but they're different, just by a few dollars, but I would amend, make a motion to amend, line, should I amend 22 or 18? 18? To amend line 18 to $53,591.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Amendment's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? All those in favor of the amendment as it proposed signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by like sign, the amended resolution is properly before us. Is there any further question about the amended resolution? And the opposite, all those in favor of adopting the amended resolution signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of three police officers for the Prattville Police Department at an annual cost not to exceed $150,000, $150,794. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas there is a need in the Prattville Police Department to fill vacancies for three full-time police officers, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such officers will not exceed an annual cost of $150,794 for salaries and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $150,794 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring three police officers, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 budget line item, police department salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, life insurance, health insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resource Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. Is there any questions or comments pertaining to this proposed resolution? Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir, Chief. Would it be at all possible to be able to hire three people that already are trained, so we don't have to send them through the academy?
We have gone through this process a number of times. We had a large amount of applicants on our first go-round. Out of those, just a few were qualified. We will get the best candidates that don't have any issues, that would embarrass the city of Prattville.
Yes.
That is our goal, to hire the most qualified that are available.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by like sign. Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Archives and History for the Continental Eagle Cotton Gin for a period of 10 years. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Department of Archives and History is in the process of creating a new exhibit on the history of Alabama, plans and drawings attached, and whereas the Department of Archives and History desires to display the Continental Eagle Cotton Gin owned by the city of Prattville as the center object of the exhibit called Cotton State, and whereas displaying the gin in this exhibit will illustrate the importance of cotton gins to economic prosperity of Alabama and showcase the work of Daniel Pratt and the people of Prattville as leading producers of these gins in the world, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the city of Prattville does hereby authorize, instruct, and empower the mayor to enter into an agreement as attached with the State of Alabama Department of Archives and History for the leasing of Continental Eagle Gin, Cotton Gin, for a period of 10 years. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that this agreement is conditioned on the city of Prattville retaining ownership of the Continental Eagle Gin. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Is there any questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by like sign. Seeing none, the resolution is approved. Take good care of our gin, doctor. Next item is a resolution to approve the change of control of current cable television franchise from Nology of Montgomery Incorporated to Wide Open West Finance LLC. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Nology of Montgomery Incorporated currently holds a cable television franchise with the city of Prattville, and whereas Nology of Montgomery Incorporated will merge with Wide Open West Finance's LLC, and whereas Local Government Services LLC provides cable television franchise management services to the city of Prattville and has provided the city with the recitals for this change of control, and whereas such change of control must be approved by the city of Prattville, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville as follows. One, Nology of Montgomery Incorporated currently holds a cable television franchise granted by the city of Prattville, Alabama. Two, grantee owns, operates, and maintains a cable television system in the city pursuant to the terms of the franchise. Three, grantee is a wholly owned subsidiary of Nology Incorporated, a Delaware corporation. Four, on or about April 26, 2012, the city received from grantee FCC Form 394, application for franchise authority consent to assignment or transfer of control of cable television franchise. Five, federal law and terms of the franchise require that the city take action to consider the application within 120 days of date of receipt or before August 24, 2012. Specifically, Section 3D of the franchise requires the city advance written consent prior to any change of control of the grantee. The application includes a copy of an agreement and plan of merger dated April 18, 2012 that provides for the acquisition of Nology and its subsidiaries, including grantee. Under the merger agreement, Wide Open West Finance LLC will acquire 100% of the ownership interest of Nology, which holds all of the ownership interest of the Nology subsidiaries. As a result of the proposed merger, grantee and WOW have requested consent from the city to the proposed change of control. The city has reviewed the proposed merger and the legal, technical, and financial qualifications of WOW. Part of the city's review relates to verification of franchise fee payments by grantee, with the final calculation still to be determined based upon further information to be provided by Nology. Based on information provided by grantee, Nology and WOW, and on the reports and information received by the city, city has elected to approve the proposed merger, subject to certain conditions set forth herein. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville as follows. All of the above recitals are hereby incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. The franchise is in full force and effect, and grantee is the lawful holder of the franchise. Grantee will be the lawful holder of the franchise after completion of the merger. The city hereby consents and approves of the proposed merger, subject to closing of the transaction described in information provided by the city by grantee and WOW. WOW shall, within 20 days of the date of closing of the proposed merger, notify the city in writing of the closing. Within 20 days of the date of adoption of this resolution, grantee shall execute and file with the city the acceptance and agreement attached heretofore to verify the grantee's compliance with the terms and conditions of this resolution. Grantee shall, within 20 days of the date of adoption of this resolution, fully reimburse city for all of the city's reasonable costs and expenses in connection with the city's review of the proposed merger, including, without limitation, all costs incurred by the city for experts and attorneys retained by the city to assist in the review, as well as notice and publication cost. The reimbursement shall not be deemed to be franchise fees within the meaning of Section 622 of the Cable Act, nor shall the reimbursement be deemed to be payment in kind or any involuntary payment chargeable against the franchise fees to be paid by the city by grantee pursuant to Section 11 of the franchise. The reimbursement shall be considered a requirement and charge, or charge incidental to the awarding of, enforcing of the franchise. Grantee shall fully reimburse the city for all of the city's reasonable costs and expenses for the franchise fee review, which totals 6,000 for the cost of the consultant hired to conduct the review, plus underpaid franchise fees totaling $62,201.25 and interest totaling The above payments shall not be deemed to be franchise fees within the meaning of Section 622 of the Cable Act, nor shall they be deemed to be payments in kind or any involuntary payments chargeable against the franchise fees to be paid by the city by grantee pursuant to Section 11 of the franchise. The payments shall be considered a requirement or charge incidental to the awarding or enforcing of the franchise. In the event the proposed merger contemplated by the foregoing resolutions is not completed for any reason, the city's consent shall not be effective. If any of the conditions set forth herein are not met by grantee or WOW, the city's consent to the proposed merger shall be null and void and of no effect. This resolution shall take effect and continue and remain in effect from and after the date of its passage, approval, and adoption. Mr. President, I so move.
Well done, Counselor Brown. That was a long one. Counselor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Miller?
We've talked, this may be for Mr. Duke, we've talked periodically about seeing if we could have a local community channel by the cable companies. Nology and Charter, I guess, are the ones serving the area. See this in other communities, and we've had competing priorities, so we've never really, I think, gotten any traction in that area. But I'm still interested in whether or not that is something that we could, I guess, when these agreements are renewed or whatever, explore, because I think it could have a lot of benefit to the community, to have that sort of a. lot of benefit to the community to have that sort of a channel. So I just want to put that out, since I definitely won't be here much longer. I would hope that the council would continue to look at that potential opportunity.
Mr. Duke to address that for you, or what?
No.
Okay.
I just, I think it would be a good thing, so that's part of my, I'm already starting my parting comments, so, since I'm not running again.
Okay. Thought I recognized something in that. Any other questions, comments pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to accept maintenance of Legends Office Park at Home Place, the Home Place Plats 1A and C, the Exchange Plats 1, 3, and 4. Counselor Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Prattville Planning Commission granted final approval of the following subdivisions on the list stated. Legends Park at Home Place, Plat 1, January fifth, 2006. The Home Place, Plat 1, June fifteenth, 2006. The Home Place, Plat 1C, April twentieth, 2006. The Exchange, Plat 1, November sixteenth, 2006. The Exchange, Plat 3, September eighteenth, 2008. Exchange, Plat 4, October fifteenth, 2009. And whereas the owners of said subdivision must maintain the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in the subdivisions until accepted by the City Council. And whereas the owners of said subdivision has maintained the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in the subdivision for a period of two years or longer, and corrected all deficiencies noted by the Prattville Engineering Department. And whereas the owners of said subdivision have requested the City of Prattville to accept the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in the listed subdivisions. And whereas the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in said subdivisions were inspected and approved by the Prattville City Engineering and Planning Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that all the public utilities, right-of-ways, and easements in Legends Park at Home Place, Plat 1, the Home Place, Plat 1A, the Home Place, Plat 1C, the Exchange, Plat 1, the Exchange, Plat 3, and the Exchange, Plat 4 are hereby accepted by the City of Prattville for permanent maintenance. I so move.
Counselor Bowes has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joel, I just, a couple of questions, I want to make sure I'm clear on this for future references, where it talks about a subdivision for a period of two years. Does that mean that the requestor has to maintain it for two years after it's been expected or before?
No, sir. That two-year period begins the day of final plat approval by the Planning Commission. And there's a caveat in the city's regulation that if they reach, say, a build-out, I believe it's eighty percent, before that two-year period is of, then they can ask that it be accepted at that point. In this subdivision, and many of the others we have around the city, they pass that two-year period, and they're not at eighty percent completion on the lots, but their obligation to maintain those public facilities is only a two-year period. And that was increased about ten years ago from a one-year period, so.
For instance, Planning Commission granted five of approval in January five, oh, six.
Right.
The timeframe to continue, for them to make any improvements on that, it's over.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So they actually just, we're continuing until it's before us now.
That's correct. What we do in this case, or before we bring you a subdivision, we go back and inspect it, any deficiencies that are noted or corrected before it's brought to you for acceptance. So they have brought it to a point where it is in good shape before they ask you for acceptance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Miller?
Yeah, a couple of questions. These are, you know, relatively upscale areas, and I know they've got that higher-dollar streetlight, so to speak. What have we built into, you know, in terms of ongoing obligation on their part? Because I know those lights are more expensive than our usual Chris Hope, you know, version.
Yes, sir. We have generally an agreement where they pay the upcharge on that. And it depends on the system. If they were on the co-op system, there's not a higher expense there, but with Alabama Power, there is.
So.
We bill that annually.
And they're mixed, or what?
They're different in each of these subdivisions. I'd have to look at it. I can get back to you on that.
But I guess if I'm hearing you, then you are covering all the bases in terms of making sure that they pay any upcharge.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? See no opposition. Resolution is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Like it recorded, I abstain from that transaction, from that vote.
It'd be so recorded. Resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to appoint elected officials for the 2012 municipal elections. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas a regular quadrennial municipal election has been called to be held on the August twenty-eighth, 2012, and runoff election where necessary on the October ninth, 2012. And whereas Section 11 dash forty-six dash twenty-seven of the Alabama Code of nineteen-seventy-five as amended provides in part that the municipal governing body, not less than fifteen days before holding of a municipal election, appoint from the qualified electors of the prospective wards or voting districts officers to hold the elections as follows. Where electronic vote counters are used, an inspector and at least three clerks are required for each electronic vote counter. David, do I have to read all these names? Okay. Just the title and the address. District 1 Voting Center, Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce, 131 North Court Street. District 2 Voting Center, First Missionary Baptist Church, 192 Seventh Street. District 2 Voting Center, Spring Hill AME Zion Church, 303 County Road 4 East. District 3 Voting Center, St. Joseph's Catholic Church, 511 North Memorial Drive. District 4 Voting Center, Glenwood Baptist Church, 376 McQueen Smith Road North. District 5 Voting Center, Journey Church, 435 Sheila Boulevard. District 6 Voting Center, Trinity United Methodist Church, 610 Fairview Avenue. District 7 Voting Center, Doster Memorial Community Center, 424 South Northington Street, and absentee voting alternates. Therefore be it resolved that notice be given to each such official as required by law, and that the Prattville City Clerk publish the foregoing list of election officials so appointed, showing the voting precincts and the election officers appointed for each such voting place by publication in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper published in the City of Prattville, and posting in three public places at least ten days prior to such election. Be it further resolved that the Prattville City Clerk is hereby directed to post the list of qualified voters authorized to vote in the municipal option election to be held August twenty-eighth, 2012, at three public places in the city, namely, City Hall, Otoga County Courthouse, and the Prattville Public Library, at least five days prior to such election, as required by law. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a school of instruction shall be held in the Doster Community Center, 424 South Northington Street, on August twenty-second, 2012, at nine a.m. Poll workers will be compensated ten dollars for the approximate one and a half hour session if they also worked the election. Be it further resolved that each election official shall be compensated for his/her service at the polling center on Election Day, August twenty-eighth, 2012, and runoff day, October ninth, 2012, if necessary, at the rate of a hundred and sixteen dollars per day, except for inspectors who will receive a hundred and twenty-six dollars per day. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. That exhausts our regular agenda, but I believe Counselor Fink has an agenda item to come from the floor.
Yes, sir, I do. I have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the 2012 Airport Improvement Funding Agreement between the State of Alabama Department of Transportation and the Prattville Airport Authority for Project Number Three dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six-zero dash zero-one-four dash two-zero-one-two. Whereas the Prattville Airport Authority is a city-appointed board, and whereas the Prattville Airport Authority has applied for state funds from the 2012 Airport Improvement Funding Agreement for the installation of perimeter fencing, and whereas the Prattville Airport Authority will coordinate all phases of the project through the Aeronautics Bureau Office, and whereas this grant is at no cost to the City of Prattville. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of the City of Prattville to sign any and all documents necessary for the implementation of the 2012 Airport Improvement Funding Agreement, Project Number Three dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six-zero dash zero-one-four dash two-zero-one-two. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution from the floor for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. By point of order, since this came from the floor, this will have to carry over to our next regular scheduled meeting unless I hear a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Wood to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowes. Is there any discussion on the proposal to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? Seeing none, the rules are suspended and the resolution is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. We will open the floor up for public comments at this time. If you have any issue or any question that you would like to ask the City Council, now is the time to come forward and ask. Raise your hand and be recognized if you have any issue or business to come before.
This is a question that may or may not be answerable, but as part of the elections that are going on in the city, there's been a lot of talk about increasing city revenues and decreasing city expenses. So is there any possibility that the projection that was of the present budget, we're ten months into that present budget? Is there any way of projecting that we're on budget, or we're under budget, or we're over budget as far as city revenue and expenditures?
Oh, yes, sir. Our finance director has all that at hand. Would you like for him to come up and share that with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I spoke with the mayor about this today. As of the end of June, I haven't, you know, pulled the July numbers to get it together because we haven't gotten all those expenses in. But as of the end of June, we're seventy-five percent through the year, but we've only used sixty percent of our budget, so we are well below budget on expenditures and right on track with revenues.
Okay, that's a satisfactory. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I would like also to add to that is that with all the hard work from the department heads and the employees, I had challenged them to come in approximately one million dollars under budget, and we are on track to hopefully meet that goal. But they have all been pulling together to cut our expenses. They've been very, very mindful of all of them, and so I want to tip my hat to all the employees and the department heads. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from those present at the City Council? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Caught me off guard there.
I know I did. I want to thank the mayor for bringing up Larry Green, but sitting back there, just received tons of phone calls and condolences from citizens, and one lady called not too long ago where Larry had went out on an inspection on a contractor that was not permitted, and Joel didn't put a stock worker order on it, but she just didn't have any money. And after he got off, went up there and fixed the problem for her. But I also want to thank the city employees. I merit to tell you, we had a great showing there of city employees, contractors, and builders at his funeral, and I was very pleased in that. But also, I did want to state that Larry was, he was president of the Electrical Association. He played a big part in having that brought to the Marriott over two years ago. Also, he was a certified, ICC certified electrical inspector, ICC certified building inspector, ICC certified building official. That takes a lot to get the last one, is what I'm trying to say. He served also with the CERT program and training. He was the ham radio operator under disasters at the EMA. He will be sorely missed by the fire department and me, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Please come forward, identify yourself by name and address, please.
Address, local address. P.O. Box 681892. President of Oasis of Hope here in the City of Prattville, which is a nonprofit community We are partnering with the City of Prattville this year with our Back to School Rally. And the reason I'm here, of course, I know the budget for the city is already pretty much taken care of for the year, but what I'm here is asking your councilmen and councilwoman and Mr. Mayor to be a part of this event financially, as well as attendance-wise. If you've never heard of our Back to School Rally, Oasis of Hope Back to School Rally, let me give you a quick history on it. This is our eighth year. There's thousands of students that show up every year. And what we do, we give them backpacks filled with school supply. This year, I go, start out to be five hundred, but I'm trying to push that number to a thousand, boat bag, filled with school supply. So that's where you come in at. So I guess I'm saying, I need your money. No, that's the preacher side of it. But seriously, though, we would love to have your support with this. I know Mr. American, he attended one of our events on last year. Matter of fact, this very event that I'm talking about, this year is going to be held at Stanley Stadium. Everything will be absolutely free. That's the food, that's the entertainment, that's the school supply, so that's why I'm here tonight. So I would love for you to consider that, being a part of this financially, again personally, we would love that. I have something that if I could approach you to give you, that would be okay.
That'd be fine. Come on forward.
The reason I didn't give my physical address, because I live in Jefferson County.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Look forward to hearing from you guys. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Any?
I'm sorry. You said "the date." It should be on the letter, August eighteenth.
It is?
Okay. Because I didn't read it. Somebody else wrote it for me.
Right there.
No, I'm just.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, we're.
Mr. Chair.
Who said that? Counselor Wood?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on this particular, especially with Oasis of Hope what they've done in the past eight years. If you're all familiar, you know, I have an event called North Island Park Community Fund Day, and we give back to organizations we've given to Habitat for Humanity, ROTC, Target Christmas Team. And last year, we gave two Oasis of Hope. So I want to applaud Oasis of Hope for coming by and then working along with the city, and applaud the city for working along with them to make this event even a better and bigger event than it has been in the past, and we look forward to hopefully contributing and helping you with your organization in the near future. So I applaud the city for getting involved. No, this is one of the things that the mayor has constantly talked about, getting organizations involved with the city. So we thank you, Pastor Dixon.
Any other councillors have any comments? Been advised by our city attorney that we must go into executive session to discuss a possible legal action. We will go into executive session. We will go into executive session once the council approves that, and at the end of our executive session, we will close the council meeting for the evening. Chair will entertain a motion to move into executive session. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Counselor Bowes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We are in executive session. The meeting, do I hear a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.